Can I say something about you?
Sure.
Aye, I've got dirty hands, I'll give you a high five. Jess. J S S A. Nice to meet you. How are you?
How are you feeling, I'm sure?
Taylor, who's in the second grade. What grade are you in? Maybe a better class mix. Aren't you really me? What's his name? Oh gosh, that's my grandson, so I know that one too. I've gone there and helped with the class, he was very nice. Yep. Yeah. That's the fun part of life. And the youngest one, we tried to get some of the eight year olds to be learning. Because it's a test center. So it is very good. I had a friend that's on career lobbying, he was helping try to wrap up. We'd have got three of them, I was running through, it was very short. Any kids?
Yeah.
About three.
Uh, well, we have Taylor and Kenna. I think that's it, two juniors moving up. But I mean, in terms of eighth graders, not a number, but they're on. This year's eighth grade classes are very good. But this year's seventh grade classes could be, they're very good. So, they would have been too young, they would have been too small. Couldn't experience it.
I would think so.
I would like to. Want to come down and have a look at you guys too. They got a part of it. There'd be rules not to do. Both have already talked to quite a number of them, I think we'll be okay. I'm going to leave for a different reason. But I called. I'm telling the picture going great, things going right here. And then, uh. I'm around with four guys, I gotta go. No, I won't bow, because it's what I'm coming to.
God, he's so quiet. Here we go, guys. Everybody ready? I'd like to call to order the city council's special meeting. April 27th, 2025, 3:30 PM, 501 Main Street. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call? Crenshaw, Walker.
Here.
Mullen, Cackley.
Here.
Dade, Andrews.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Greenwald.
Here.
Seven present, two F's. Item number four. Now's the time and place for a public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 annual budget. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Gate City on April 18th, 2025. I am opening the public hearing at 3:31. Floor is open, if anybody has any questions for a discussion. I'm going to read, "On behalf of the staff for the city of Kielkuk, we present the fiscal year 25-26 budget. The budget reflects the goals and priorities requested by the council, as well as the needs and wants of our citizens. We are required to pass the budget by resolution. All details are attached." Do we have any discussion?
All right, if there's no discussion, I'd like to just go over this with everybody real quick. On the first page, if, this is only our second year, so if you're not familiar with it, at the top middle of the page, you'll see the CGFL. And that was something new that we dealt with last year, that's the Combined General Fund Levy. That used to be broken down into what they called the 810 tax and the 27 cent emergency tax. So, the state combined that. So you'll see that it reflects just to the left of that, 8.37 levy rate. And that has been that way, I think, since 1986. Most small communities are in that same position. It's not been raised since then, and everybody, I shouldn't say everyone, a lot of communities are at that max levy. They also separate, you'll notice, with gas and electric and without gas and electric. That simply means that back in the 90s, the gas and electric utilities asked that they be separated. So it shows what they contribute specifically to the tax levy. If you go to page two, we have our proposed tax levy that we had to have our special hearing on, that was also new last year. So this is year two of that, so I just want to touch on that again also. As discussed, we knew that some of those items could be changed after we got through the lockout period that the state mandates. So, when those were changed, you'll notice that the levy went from 26.92 to 26.25. And then, the percentage of change in the states form down towards the bottom on residential went from 21.02 to 18. And the percentage of change on commercial went from 22.5 to 19.45. So, when we had our hearing, I just gave a few examples of how that impacted your taxes directly by pulling just three houses in the city and explained exactly how the formula works and what that would cost you. So, with the tax levy adjusted after our public hearing and after the council's approval, the difference now is about $31 per 100,000 assessed value reduction. So, that will be reflected on your current taxes. On page three of 20, this summarizes all of the pages that you have in your pamphlet tonight. And so I'll just start out with the very first column. It's general fund, and if you look down towards the bottom, you'll see fiscal year 26. This one is the one that I've received the most questions about because it looks a little more skewed than the rest of the columns. And the main reason behind that is the timing of the purchase of the fire truck at about 1.7 million. And then the timing of the receipt of bond proceeds, which will come in sometime after July 1st, is the expectation. So, if you look at the beginning fund balance, you'll notice that it's roughly 2.6 million. Revenues for the year are 15.6. Expenditures are 13.4. And then our ending fund balance will be $4,819,237. There are a lot of different items that go into the general fund. It could be anything from revenues generated from all the different departments, building permits, fire inspections, library fees, police fine amounts. Of course, property taxes go in there, franchise fees. But again, the biggest difference is that fire truck. And that, I think I received maybe two different questions from citizens via email about why that one looks so different this year. The next column is our special revenues column. If you'll notice, the beginning fund balance will be roughly 4.2 million. Our revenues are 7.4. Expenses are 7.0. And our ending fund balance will be about 4.5 million. That one, special revenues, is road use tax. That's set out by our state every year, there's a slight increase in that. They give us a dollar amount, and then it's per capita of your last census. A slight increase there. Economic development goes in there. I received a question today about AMJET repayment. And we are still receiving that. I checked with Celeste today, I think four or five more months of that, and that will be repaid in full to the city. And there is also an escrow account to ensure those payments are made. So if there was a default, we would have received the money in an escrow account via stock options. Employee benefits flow into there, local option sales tax. And the biggest reason for the reduction in the expenditures is we had the Rand Park bathrooms in there this year, so. TIF funding is pretty straightforward. This year, we're going to receive approximately 1.63 million. We applied the majority of that to TIF applicable debt. We went through with all of our debt with Piper Sandler, Aylers and Cooney, made sure that it was all TIF applicable, and then applied it to the appropriate debt. Capital projects. You notice we'll have a beginning balance of 547,000. Revenues are about 5.6 million. Expenses are about 4.7 million. And we will have an ending fund balance of about 1.4 million. This, again, is a little bit different because of the timing of some of the receipt of funds as opposed to the expenditure, some of the street bonds in there, brownfield grants for 365 carbide lane cleanup are some of the bigger contributors in that column. Our permanent fund is the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. And then, total government. That is everything except for the proprietary funds, which are in the column right next to that. So we will have a beginning fund balance of about 8.2 million. We have revenues of about 34 million. Expenses about 30 million, and an ending fund balance of about 11.7 million. The proprietary funds are in the next column. That would be water pollution control, sewer and sanitation. Those are the departments that the city collects fees for the services. The beginning fund balance is about 5.3 million. Expenses about 5.1, or correction, revenues about 5.1. Expenses about 4.9, and an ending fund balance of about 5.5 million. And then the last column is the grand total of everything that we just covered. The beginning fund balance will be about 13.5 million. Revenues are about 39.1 million. Expenses are about 35.5. And our ending fund balance will be about 17,226,452. So, a little bit of improvement over last year's. We do still have some things on the horizon that could pose challenges to us in the future. Our state legislators are still looking at regulating how we assess fees and putting caps on those. They're also looking at revamping TIF funding. And it's even been proposed all the way up to a 50% reduction in TIF. So if, if you have any concerns, reach out to all your local politicians and state politicians and let them know your concerns. Some of the caps that they're talking about putting in place with two different bills that they are considering right now will not even keep up with CPI, inflationary rates or anything like that. So, it's definitely worth having a conversation with them. The Iowa League of Cities has put together some spreadsheets that make some estimates going forward by a consulting firm called PFG. Celeste and I have been looking at those. If those go through, it looks like we would see some immediate reductions, but some more significant reductions about four or five years out. Some of the league's guidance says that it looks like we're shifting from commercial and industrial to residential tax. So, make sure you voice your concerns with your politicians. I think that is the best summary on page three. If anybody has any questions, Celeste and I will do our best to answer them. I know Dorothy already asked one, did you want to go over that one in the meeting, Dorothy? Or did the answer suffice?
It's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to be sure we got some deliberate tax money.
Yep, we get it, it just didn't show up in that particular line item.
You have, do you have bill numbers for the things you want us to talk to the legislators about?
Yes, I will get those for you. I knew what they were about two or three weeks ago, but then they did away with one and they came up with two new ones, so I don't have the two new ones memorized, but I definitely get them for you.
We're right on the verge of ending the session up there, so.
Yeah, they don't, what, what the League of Cities is saying is they don't think they're going to make it through because they have this period of discussion. They want input from everybody. So now's the time to do it, I'll get you those two, two numbers. And I'll send it out to the whole council in an email. Make myself a note of that.
Any more questions? City clerk, do you have any written comments or objections that have been received? Therefore, being no further comments or objections on this matter, I will close the public hearing at 3:43 PM. Go to item number 4B, consider resolution approving the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 budget. I need a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Then I need a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. We'll go right on into the workshop. So, I can get my papers apart. I'd like to open the council workshop, April 28th, 27th, 2025, immediately following the special council meeting. And the first item on the agenda is discussion regarding the Grand Avenue reconstruction project. We have any discussion? Okay, in front of you is a timeline for Grand Avenue. I don't know if you guys want me to go ahead and read this. Okay. This is a timeline for when we first started the process of Grand Avenue for the reconstruction. January 1st, January 8th, 2024, proposed fiscal year 24-25 through fiscal year 25-26 street repair plan was presented to the Public Works Committee. The committee members were Altman, Crenshaw, Dade and Walker. Committee approved of the plan, which included the following streets. South 18th, which is the Road of Honor, Tymia, Upper Grand, North Fourth and Palin, with a few additional minor projects to fill in the gaps. Tymia, Upper Grand, North Fourth and Palin were slated to be mill and fill asphalt projects. February 15th, 2024, the above-street plan was presented to the city council at a workshop. Public Works was told to proceed with the plan. South 18th was already well along in the design phase. North Fourth was to follow South 18th and be the next project. That changed due to the plan that was put together for the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant. North Fourth was added to the grant by the consulting firm. The grant had to have a street and a sidewalk element. No work including engineering could be done or performed before the awarding of the grant. We moved on to the next street on the north side of town, which was Upper Grand Avenue. The mayor signed the design contract for Upper Grand on June 13th, 2024. Up to this point, we were anticipating a mill and fill project. The opinion of the cost was approximately $300,000. Core samples were completed in October of 2024. The cost was $1,300. Samples were then given to the engineers. It was determined that the existing asphalt was rotten and a mill and fill project could no longer be done. Engineers were then instructed to look at doing a reconstruction project and report to the city that would cost, that the cost would, what the cost would look like. The cost for the engineers was $51,260. I sent, Public Works sent out an email requesting Public Works Committee meeting for 12/12/24 to, to the committee members, Dade, Cackley, Tillman and Bryant, Mayor Mahoney and Administrator Bellegarde. The new opinion of the cost was received on 12/16/2024 from the engineers, 1.2 to 1.3 million. I received, Public Works received correspondence back from the committee and the meeting was set for January 8th, 2025. On January 8th, 2025, Public Works Committee meeting was held with members Dade, Cackley, Tillman and Bryant and Mayor Mahoney and Administrator Bellegarde. The condition of the existing road was explained and the committee was informed that the Grand Avenue project was no longer mill and fill but a reconstruction. Their new opinion of the cost was 1.2 to 1.3 million was told to the committee. After some discussion about the funds, much was left, how much was left out of the 5 million bond, the census of the committee was to move forward with the project. The committee also discussed the Tymia project and that it could no longer be a mill and fill project and had to be reconstruction. An opinion of cost has not been provided for that by the engineers. On February 20th, 2025, council voted to set the public hearing bid letting and award of the project. On March 26th, 2025, a public bid opening was held at the city council chambers. Bids were opened and came in well under the opinion of the cost provided by the engineer for, at almost, for almost $450,000. As to date, the city has paid the 551,260 to the engineering service and will soon receive a bill for the second part of the engineering costs. This will put the cost over $100,000. Jones Contracting Corporation from West Point, Iowa, won the bid at $796,098.50. Part of this lower bid is because they can move their equipment from South 18th project to the Grand Avenue project. Do we have any further discussion?
I would just like to state, we're looking at almost half million dollars less than what we originally were. After, after we found out we couldn't mill and fill it because Jones is already in town, they're already right here. And if we do not do this now, and I've already said this at a previous meeting, if we don't do it now, we're not going to be anywhere near that, just under $800,000. We have to redo this, two years down the road, we're going to be at $3, $4 million. And I know when everybody hears Grand Avenue, they're thinking of the Grand Avenue straight east of us. This is not, this is what is on the other side of Rand Park. It's not the high-dollar homes and all the fancy sidewalks. This is the other side of Rand Park. The houses look just like mine. Just like half of yours, probably. It's not the high-dollar Grand Avenue. Everybody hears Grand Avenue thing, oh, we're, we're doing it for the rich, we're doing it, we're not. This is a very high-travel road as well, but it's in very dire straits. Since we had our meeting where we voted it down, besides the emails that you have in front of you, I've had four phone calls from people, probably because it's in my, it's in my ward. But I've had four different people call me and they can't believe we didn't vote, we didn't vote for this. It's like, what do they think this is, you know, at this type of money? And we've had two contractors that have told you basically the same thing that I just told you. That it's going to cost us twice that if we don't do it now. We've already, we've already invested almost $100,000. And so, it makes sense to just do it now. We're not, it doesn't take Tymia out of it. We took Fourth out of it because we wanted to put it with a grant. And the stipulations for a grant is, if you're going to use it as a grant, there can't be any work done to it before that. That was the whole reason we voted to take Fourth out of it. Grand was next in line. When we did this originally and we had the consultation, Bryant talked with the engineers and the guys come down and drove all over town, Grand was next in line. This, this, this road was next in line. It's not like we jumped it in front of everybody else. We agreed on that order, what, a year ago? Somewhere's about that. And now when we get to that, all of a sudden now, it's like, oh, we don't want to do that. We didn't know then what it would cost, we just knew that was next in line. We were not realizing that it was going to be inch and a half of asphalt. We thought it'd be four inches of asphalt. It should have been four inches of asphalt, but it's not. So, we have to move on from there. We can't, and I stated it before, you don't call a roofer because you got a leak. Oh, well, while I was up there, I found you got three trusses broke and your ceiling tile. Well, you know what, we're not going to do anything, just go ahead and leave, we'll leave it alone. Because in two months, your roof's going to fall in. All this route, all this road's going to do is potentially, it's going to gradually get worse. And so instead of the $796,000, we're going to be at $3 or $4 million. And then you're going to have people upset because why didn't we do it before? That's what will happen, is two years down the road, when we approve it at $3 or $4 million, we're going to have everybody calling us back, why didn't you do it for $800,000? When you could have done it for $800,000?
If there's one thing that you can get more in a consensus on in the city of Kielkuk, and that's hard to do, is that our streets are bad. Now, that's where that stops, the order of what's fixed first and what's fixed next and everything. That would get in there. But as you know, Mr. Nye called us all out in my ward to Lincoln Avenue. Gravel Road, got a great big old cottonwood tree, you got to go around all the time. It don't drain right and all that. The one thing about it, if we do this Grand Avenue, then that's off, off the board. Grand Avenue's done from start to finish, and we can move on. We need all these streets fixed, but to do nothing, to reject this bid because we doesn't, we don't have another thing on, on the schedule to do after we get down South 18th till next year. We got to go through all the architectural stuff and everything. So, to do nothing, I believe is not an option. We need to do this project.
Kathy, I got a couple of questions. It says the cost was 1,300 on this page for the core samples, wasn't that 13,000? Okay, so the first time it was a type error, okay. Now, along with that 1,300 and the 51,000 for the engineering, how is the cost approaching $100,000? What, what are we missing?
We haven't received a second bill for the second, well, Brian, you probably tell them.
Wasn't it just $51,000 and that was it?
So, the initial contract with the engineers was for them to do a design for a mill and fill project. Once we determined that that wasn't possible, the design cost goes up for a reconstruct project. It's basically two different animals. There's a lot more work involved in doing a tear-out and reconstruct for the engineering side of it than there is for a mill and fill.
So they had to design it twice, basically. They made one design for a mill and fill. So that's two separate charges.
Yep.
Now, I would like to go back to... Now, I would like to go back to the eighth of January, two thousand twenty-four, where at the Public Works Committee, council member Altman, Crenshaw, Dade, and myself, we went over the plan for the streets. Now, that was before Fourth Street was included in a grant. So Fourth Street was, if I remember right, after that conversation, Fourth was supposed to be the next in line.
Fourth was supposed to happen after Eighteenth.
After Eighteenth, right. So that got up for a grant, so that kind of changed things. And I can, I remember the takeaway amongst the council members was we were not sure if we would have enough money to do anything else because we were looking at three point five million to do Eighteenth. And then Fourth Street, we weren't sure exactly how much that was going to cost. And that was also before the nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant that we got to do Eighteenth Street. So the numbers did change a little bit, granted. Now, on June sixth of last year, the council approved the engineering for the Eighteenth, for the Grand Avenue project. And the cost was fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Now, not that I'm, you know, I can't see the future or anything, but I'm guessing that if we knew then what we know now, we wouldn't have approved it. We wouldn't have approved two separate fifty-one thousand dollar engineering costs. We probably would have pulled out of Grand Avenue if we knew that the cost was going to be approaching a million dollars. Now, it's nobody's fault, but when the engineering was done and the core samples were taken, I know the Public Works Committee, which had changed members by that time, they were informed. I don't think the rest of the council was informed. And I think the, the problem here was that we approved a three hundred thousand dollar mill and fill and then by surprise, it went up to a conceivably one million dollar complete tear-out and redo. You know, so it caught us kind of off-guard. We were not given complete details on that. So, you know, I was anticipating this bid, but I do think it should have gone back to the city council to approve a totally new job before it went out to bid. That's, that's just my opinion. Because it's a totally different job and just assuming that we would greenlight it, regardless of the cost, I think was a little bit naive.
Even though you, you got one bid for a engineering on mill and fill, and once the mill and fill was no longer an option, to get the engineering for the concrete, and since they'd already approved that that's the next project is Grand Avenue, you're saying we should have came back to the council to get an okay for more engineering? Three times.
I don't, I don't think you're correct because on February twentieth, after we found out it couldn't be a mill and fill, we voted to set the public hearing for a new bid letting and award of project. On the February, on February twentieth. What's that? Well, we didn't know that because he hadn't put out any bids. We knew, we knew at that point, mill and fill wouldn't work. And we told Brian, yes, we want to, we want to go out and have another R I P so we can have another request for bids. And then on March twenty-sixth, those bids came in.
Didn't we okay? Didn't we engineer, didn't we okay the bid for the second, second, second construction? Did we have to have another okay for, for the construction of the same project?
I don't remember, I don't remember discussing the engineer bid. But we did, after, after, after he got the core in mail, the, the course, and after he got the, the engineer, the second time, we as a council told him to go ahead and request bids. At that point, the council was informed it was no longer a mill and fill. We knew it was a complete construction because that's why we voted to have him redo the bids. So we did, as a council, in February, tell Brian, yes, we want to go ahead and get a bid to completely restructure the road. We agreed to that, we okayed that. So we may, we may not have, and I, I gotta agree with, with Roger on that one is, his initial was, let's go get a, let's go get an engineering. After we got it back, we found out it wasn't. We didn't know the second engineering was going to be fifty thousand dollars. But after, when he came to the committee and he said, hey, we found out we can't do a mill and fill, what do you want to do? We, as a committee, told him, well, we need to get new bids. We're going to need to figure, we're going to need them to restructure and figure out what it's going to take so we can get new bids and bring that to the council. So he went, talked with the same engineer company, I believe, and that's what he brought to us on February twentieth. Because he was instructed by the committee to, yes, let's go get another engineer, figure out what we've got to do. And that's when they decided to just to restructure it. Something we also need to think about is if you look at the north end of Grand, about half of the driveways have been added on to. So some of them are set way back, some of them are stuck way out in the road. So if we don't fix it, that also continues to cost the city money because the plows are hitting them concrete every time they go through there. And if it's not tearing the plow up, it's tearing the concrete up. So then we're fixing the concrete for the, for the citizen that owns that. And when we restructure it, that'll all be one continuous curb. We won't have any of that back and forth, up and down. It'll solve the water problem, all of it. So the mill and fill, we were pretty much just going to refill it the exact same way it was. We weren't going to deal with the curbs, we weren't going to mess with all the different ends and outs of driveways. Now that we're going to completely restructure it, that'll solve a couple of problems. It solves the driveway problem, it solves the water runoff problem, and it fixes the road. That's part of why the engineer cost was so much more, there was so much more involved on the second one. Because then now they've got to figure out completely, we've got to completely restructure. And Jones comes in and they're looking at redoing all of that. So for them to come in and redo the whole thing for just a little over twice what we were going to mill and fill is astronomical. You, you would never be able to do that. You take any road in town that you're thinking about milling and filling and then go back and you know what? Let's go ahead and restructure it all, it'll be three or four times that. Theirs is just under eight hundred thousand dollars, so it's just a little over twice to do a complete structure.
Okay, anybody else? Any more? Just a quick note, we did get, word that we were getting the nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Road of Honor. We did get that before that first meeting, we did, we got it in two thousand twenty-three.
What is puzzling to me, why we would go ahead and do a design before the core samplings were done? You say in the paperwork here that you approved the design, if I read it right, in June, before the core samples were ever done in October. That seems like putting the cart before the horse to me. We need to make sure that we have, if you have core samples that indicate a mill and fill is not going to be appropriate, then why would you approve an engineer design be done for mill and fill?
We, we let the engineer determine and evaluate the core samples. So either way, we have to hire an engineer to send the core samples to, to tell. We, we let them tell us whether or not they can design a mill and fill off of that or, or a, if they can't. Their whole reason for going to mill and fill is because the majority of the council, when we, when we did the five million dollar bond, wanted to see how far we could take five million dollars and mill and fill is the quick, cheap way to fix streets. So we looked at doing milling fills on these, on the streets that were selected. We did, we hired an engineer, we did the engineer, we do the core samples, we send them to the engineer. The engineer evaluates them and says that's, it's not feasible for you to do a milling fill project based on the material that's on the ground.
Right, and that would only be one set of engineering plans. I don't see where a second set should come into play if you had done it in the sequence that you just referenced.
We didn't, we didn't receive two sets of plans. They had to, they had to change their design anyway. If you understand what I'm saying. They design all this in their computers, get the core sample and then say, hey, we.
But they shouldn't have designed anything till after the core samples were examined. That's what I'm trying to say. They shouldn't have designed anything till after they had the core samples in hand and it was very apparent that a mill and fill would not work.
I mean, we could be doing the same thing with Eighteenth Street because you hire an engineer and then you hire an environmental firm to come out to make sure we can do the project. I know it seems backward and Dave and I are dealing with this on Eighteenth right now, but that's just kind of how the process goes. The engineer includes this, includes the evaluation of core samples and a lot of times they'll even recommend us on doing soil samples and drilling. But that's all part of their scope and fee from the beginning of the project.
If, if I remember, we were, we were anticipating milling fill on a lot of them. Fourth Street even, we were anticipating that. And so we tell them, hey, give us a rough estimate, this is how long it is. You know, they do this all the time, so it's easy. They, we're going to take out four inches, we're going to put four inches back. This is about the cost of material, this is about the cost of labor. So they give us a rough idea of the three hundred thousand. But they, before they sign off on that, hey, we need to have core samples so we can make sure this works. So we go spend thirteen hundred dollars, now we have core samples. We hadn't actually requested any bids, if I remember right, for the milling fill. We were just taking a rough idea from the engineer, this is what it was probably going to cost you if you're going to mill and fill that road. We never did actually request any bids. After the, after we milled and filled it, which is real simple, now we find, after, after we core sampled it, now we find out, hey, the milling fill is not an option. So now we tell them, okay, now that you've got all the facts, we can't use your rough idea estimate anymore. We need a, we need a structure plan. After we got the structure plan, then he actually requested bids. We've only requested bids one time. And that's, that was the seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I hope we don't do the same thing in future projects. If we're going to approve bonds for more money, for more streets, then let's get the process down so that we don't end up with two sets of engineering costs. Is that not an appropriate ask?
I don't believe it's inappropriate, but is it appropriate to turn this bid down over that?
I don't intend to turn that bid down. I have, I, I let my personal feelings for this whole process enter into my bid that night. If you recall, I fought you from the podium when you brought in a firm from outside and paid thousands of dollars for them to drive the streets and come up with the plan of what streets needed to be done, in what order, and then, yep, we go along with that. That relieved anybody from council or committees from being the deciding factor of who streets got done first. And I, I, I'm a fiscal conservative and I have tossed and turned, played this scenario for tonight in my sleep even, because it's not fiscally prudent of us to waste. I thought it was sixty-three thousand because there was one engineering cost for fifty and one for thirteen thousand to do core samples, which I learned right now is incorrect. And it, it's not fiscally prudent to waste the taxpayers' money on those studies. I didn't realize there was another whole fifty thousand dollar engineering fee going to be involved. That's why I'm saying, do it in a structured manner, do the core samples. Do you have the capability to do core samples in-house?
We do now.
That's good.
We purchased a core drill a couple of weeks ago, so we'll be able to, we, we will still have.
That should help alleviate.
We, we still will have to, we still will have to get them evaluated.
I'm not contesting that, I'm not contesting that. But we need the process to be structured so that there's not the going back and forth and additional engineering costs. It just, it boggles my mind.
I would, I would agree with that. I, I would like us going forward to potentially, especially since now the city has that option to do our own core samples, then when we talk with the engineer, this is what we have.
And also, I'm going to do it, he mentioned it, and I'm going to plow onto it again. I don't know how many times that I have said that there needs to be more communication between committees and the council so that everyone keeps apprised of what goes on in the committees. Decisions, if they're made, or recommendations is a better word I would like to choose, that be made from the committees to the council, not having the committee make the sole decision regarding things. I'm done.
Anybody else? Can we have, can somebody from there come up?
Oh, excuse me, I'm, I'm really good, I wasn't turned on. Note it, but it isn't physically or financially prudent to turn down a bid that's, that's two or three hundred thousand dollars less than estimate.
I don't intend to do that. I thought I made it clear that I will be rubber stamping the bid.
I just wanted it to be noted.
I've just got.
You want me to say it louder and longer?
I've just got one more comment, it's my own personal observation and opinion. I've noticed that regular maintenance on our streets has dropped pretty heavily. And we had spoken about the narrative from the company that came and surveyed our streets saying that while you are fixing up the worst streets, some of your medium-quality streets will go down in quality and then, you know. I don't agree with that narrative because to me, it negates the responsibility of regular maintenance on these streets. So if I'm living on Tenth Street and I can't even get regular maintenance on my street, it would be hard for me to say, oh, yeah, it's a good idea to turn around and spend a million dollars on Grand Avenue. So that is taxpayer money. It would be better spent, in my opinion, on regular maintenance for the heaviest-traveled streets that are in the worst shape. And I've said it, you know, several times already, that's kind of why I voted against the Grand Avenue project back in June. I was the only one that voted against it for that reason, I stated it that night. So my opinion on this matter was probably not going to change regardless of the bid or the project because I, I didn't think Grand Avenue was a priority back when it was a three hundred thousand dollar job. But I would like to see. But I would like to see that money be used to maintain some of our streets that are in such deplorable shape rather than going out to Grand, which granted, it's not in the best of shape, but it's not in the worst either.
Okay, so real quickly, just so you know, we have to be out of here by 4:30 because there's another meeting coming. But I know Mr. Hickey here would like to come to the podium, and you too. Okay, so we'll let, well, I guess we'll let Dan go first.
I'll go first. I'm Dan Hickey. I reside here in Kielkuk. I live on 15th and Grand. I lost the bid for the north end of Grand Avenue to the Jones Corporation, and we gave you the absolute lowest we could do in Kielkuk, you know, a place that I care about deeply. So their price, and they do a very, very quality job, is exceptional. And it's only going to get significantly higher in the future, partly that their bid was so low as they are here in Kielkuk on 18th Street now. So I'm proponent for what's going to happen in terms of the construction of Grand Avenue if you chose to go that way. I want to say I appreciate the opportunity, even have been able to bid on it. But I stand behind Jones Corporation right now and hope that you guys will approve that project.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Wilcox. I'm with Jones Contracting. So I've heard your concerns, and I can't help but agree with you as far as the engineering costs go. However, I can, from a contractor's perspective, which is the only one that I can speak on, tell you that this project will substantially cost a lot more if it is pulled from the table and has to bid again. So part of the reason that we were able to cut costs the way that we did on this project is because we're already in Kielkuk. The dirt crew is by contracting, or by excavating, excuse me. They're already on South 18th Street. We're already working on South 18th Street as well. So we were able to cut a lot of mobilization costs because we're already in town. And as Dan said, he was next runner up, and he was as low as he could possibly get. So concrete prices, and Dan can agree, every single year they increase. We never know what they're going to increase to. But they have substantially gone up since I've been in the industry, which has just been six years. They've almost doubled. It's not going to stop. So we're obviously for it. We were the low bid. I can't say that we're not for it. But if you do take this off the table, you're looking at a very substantial increase in cost, and no fault to the contractor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I think the bid is great. I think it's awesome. I think Jones has done a great job for the city so far. I would anticipate change orders happening. I know Fort Madison recently had a $100,000 change order on a, on one of their street projects. And, yeah, and, you know, different situation altogether. But I, I would just anticipate change orders happening. And even at the bid of 796,000, I don't think that's going to be, you know, I, I think the cost will go up. I think it's safe to say that that would happen, but I could be totally wrong.
Okay, so if there's not anything else that anybody truly wants to say, is there anybody that would like to see this go back on to the council, a council meeting or reconsideration?
Just a couple of things really quick here. Dorothy, you don't rubber stamp anything, and we know that. Rubber stamping, to me, I interpret that as when you just blindly say yes. And by the council going through this process, I believe it shows that none of us on the council here are trying to rubber stamp anything right now. So even if you do change your vote from a no to a yes, if we have a future vote, you're not rubber stamping anything. Just, I just want to make that clear. No one does as much due diligence as you do. Then the second thing, I would like to formally request that it be added to the next feasible council agenda.
So it has. It'll be the 15th. If, if it goes into the, if, if someone requests for it to go on to the council, it will be on the 15th because we have people that won't be here on the first, and we don't want this to be a, a situation where it looks like we hurried up and did it because somebody wasn't here. We want it, so we want to give enough time. However, it has to be someone who voted on the majority, which the majority was no. So it has to be someone request it to come up, to go back to the agenda by somebody who voted no. Okay, so if that being said, if we have nothing else that we need to say, we kind of got to move on a little and let Pam have the room because she's got really important stuff to do too. Thanks, everybody, for coming. And that will go back on, it will go on the May 15th council. Thanks.
Turn that off.
She can. She, she never has broadcasted her stuff.
Thanks, Brian.